Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
We have a forum.
I have the invocation and please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Valerie?
Father, we thank you for this time in this place. We thank you, Lord, and we pray for wisdom and knowledge, and we ask for guidance that we make right decisions at all times, help us to be kind to one another. We thank you for all things, help us to make right decisions during this meeting, and we ask for your blessings and Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is called to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I have no requests. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak? Come forward.
Regarding solid waste?
You're coming up to the microphone.
Regarding what topics, sir?
I didn't hear you.
Any topic. Okay, well, I'm David Rawls. I live at 3606 North South Dakota. I own property at 3602. Over a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, the town of Florence picked up its trash barrel there. They were attempting to charge me for garbage that was not being picked up. There was no garbage being created there. The lady in the office gave me a real hard time about it, and finally she, kind of in a huff, she told me that they would pick up the barrel. A couple of weeks later, two men came to pick up and picked up the barrel. There have been no trash containers there since then. My sense of time is not all that great, but my guess is that there hasn't been any trash pickup there for about two and a half years. Recently, I was billed for three months of trash pickup, seventeen dollars a month, which came for seventeen dollars for trash service that was not delivered. RAD insisted that they had stopped there and picked up trash, but how could they when there's no barrels there? There wasn't even any trash pickup at the curb. I sawed that. I have very limited income. If I would've had to pay the fifty-one dollars, then I would not have had fifty dollars to send to help the people in the Philippines. That's how tight my budget is. I don't see how you can insist on somebody taking something that they don't need, don't want, didn't order. I don't reside there. I own the property. If the ninety-three-year-old lady that I take care of to keep her out of nursing home, if she were to pass away, then I have a place to go back to. But I stayed there at her place in the other bedroom. I had to give up my telephone service. My budget is so tight. I couldn't stay at 3602 because if she had trouble in the night, there was no way to call me. So I finally decided to stay at her place. I didn't really want to, but that was the only thing that would work. So I'm a little upset that they suddenly started trying to charge me for seventeen dollars a month trash pickup. Leaves and things like that go to a friend's compost out of town, so I don't really need the service. Thank you.
Mr. Rawls, if I correct, the address is 3602?
Yeah, that's the address that was being billed. They took it off. They kept trying to insist that RAD had paid the... They kept insisting that RAD had picked up trash there, and so the lady finally said she would get an affidavit from the driver that he had stopped there, but I never saw an affidavit. They cannot produce an affidavit because there's never been any pickup there.
Okay, what we'll do is I'll direct the manager and his staff to look into and get back to you.
Uh...
How's the best way to get in touch with you?
Get in touch with me?
Yeah, if you'd give them their telephone number before you leave, and then they can get back to you. Okay, we'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you, Congress.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything, any public comment? Hearing and I'll call close the public. Go right into public presentations and our hearings and presentation.
Item six, public hearing and presentation. Item A, public hearing on ordinance number 605-13, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances, Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 150, Development Code, Section 150.013, Design Review. This is a first reading.
Mark?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A rather straightforward code amendment is being presented to you tonight. It's regarding the design review section of our town code. Design review, as you know, is when folks come to town and they have a new building or project that they would like to get approved. They come to either the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Historic District Advisory Commission with those plans as a precursor to getting construction permits and doing development. What we'd like to do with that section of the code is to kind of streamline the process a little bit. First of all, kind of go from about having seven items or so scenarios that require a design review application to narrowing it down to two main types of scenarios. Also, there would be some projects that we would clarify actually do not go to design review, some projects that could be minor enough that they go through design review, but they can be done through an administrative process, so they'd go to staff. It could be appealed to the commission, but it could be subject to just a simple review and approval of the staff. That would be in the case of, say, an attached sign on a commercial business or a small infill project downtown. We could just get it in and out a lot faster, accomplish the same thing. And then the larger projects would still go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. We presented these ideas to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and four out of five of the members at least really liked the idea of kind of streamlining the process and making it a little bit more business-friendly. I see Dan Bono in the back there, and he likes the idea because he's gone through the design view process a few times, and this would kind of help out some of the scenarios that we have. And this is just a public hearing tonight, and the action would be actually at the first meeting in January, since I don't believe there's a second meeting in December.
Any member of the council have any questions for Mark?
What were some of the issues of opposition in this with your other board member?
We have one commission member who... I think that he kind of would actually wanted to go the other direction and probably have more scenarios where more items are presented to the planning commission and not fewer items. And so that was one of the things that actually kind of brought about this discussion and looking at that chapter and analyzing exactly how it was written and how it's been interpreted and how it's been utilized. And it's been working really, really fine, but the question came up about some of the projects that they'd been doing out at Anthem, whether they were going to design review or not. And we were clarifying that, you know, what items go through design review and what items are just done through maybe approval of civil improvement plans or engineering plans and things like that. And that's what kind of just started the discussion. But we had one of the five members would probably like to have more items go and not less.
So at a later date, we won't recognize that we may be missing some things in the process?
Well, the way that it's written, Members Selaya, members of the council, is that there is still a review and an approval process for every scenario that comes up now. It's just going to be a matter of it's something that's reviewed through another mechanism, such as a building permit review, or civil engineering plan review, or subdivision review, or it's a design review that goes to... For administrative review, or in the case of the historic district, all the design reviews are still going to that body because you want to be cautious that new development or modified projects or remodels are not affecting any of the historical integrity in that district. So there is, at the end of the day, a mechanism to still review everything for compliance with the codes.
Thank you.
So in other words, if I understand it right, you're simplifying the procedure?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? This time I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing's open. Any member of the audience would like to come forward and speak? See no movement, we'll close the public hearing.
Item B, presentation and discussion approval/disapproval of the annual audit by Henry and Horn. Mr. Mike Farina, our finance director, will begin the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet tonight is the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30, 2013, the expenditure limitation report, as well as the auditors' reports on these financials. The town is required by state statute to complete financial statements for the year and have them audited by independent certified public accountants within six months of the close of the fiscal year. The town engaged Henry and Horn to audit this year's financial statements, and the auditors have issued their report with a clean opinion on the town's financial statements. Jeff Patterson from Henry and Horn is here tonight to explain in more detail the audit and their report. But before I turn it over to Mr. Patterson, I'd like to say that the town finished the year in excellent financial condition, as demonstrated in the CAFER. The financial position of the town improved, and healthy fund balances exist in all funds. In addition, as reflected in the accompanying expenditure limitation report, the town's spending for fiscal year 2013 was within the year's authorized expenditure limitation. You might remember last year, fiscal year ended June 30, 2012, the town prepared a more comprehensive report, which is the comprehensive annual financial report, or the CAFER as it's commonly known. As Becky Geline, the former finance director, noted last year, the CAFER would be submitted to the Government Financers Association for review. And I'm pleased to inform you that upon their review, the town received the certificate or was awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting for financial reporting. Receiving this award represents a significant accomplishment for the town. To receive the award, the CAFER was judged to meet the high standards of the award program, which includes producing a document that clearly communicates the town's financial story and in a manner that motivates potential users to use it or review it. Credit for the accomplishment must go to Ms. Geline and the finance staff, as well as the department directors, for their assistance and town council's support to achieve this award. This year's CAFER, the 2013 fiscal year ended 2013 CAFER, and also many more to follow, will also be submitted to the GFOA for their review and to receive their award. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Patterson, who's here to present the audit report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I'm with Henry and Horn, here to present the audit. We audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information for the town of Florence as of and for the year ended June 30, 2013. Our audit was performed in accordance to auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on these financial statements based on our audit. As Mike mentioned, our audit was clean or unmodified opinion for this year, meaning that we had no significant findings. Also, in accordance with the government auditing standards, we did issue a report, which is in the back of the CAFER, which is a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on financial statement audit. And this report basically goes through the internal controls that we identified in the city and that we relied upon to come to the conclusion of our audit. During that, we did not find any items that we considered to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Also, in that report, we performed tests on compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, noncompliance of which could have a direct and material effect on the financial statements. And it's important to note that we did not find any significant or any noncompliance matters with that. Also, this year, we did not issue, you may have noticed, last year there was a single audit report. This year, the city or the town was not required to have a single audit report because it did not meet the threshold of $500,000 of federal expenditures during the year to require that report this year. And with that, are there any questions?
Any member of the council have any questions? No. No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. I just hope you have a good time working with Mike as you did with Becky.
Absolutely.
And if you don't, let us know.
Will do.
Okay, Mike? Thank you very much. Let's see, next was going to be the presentation of the Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor, I do need a motion to accept that.
Is that an action item?
I make a motion to accept the town's comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2013.
Second?
We have a motion, second, to accept the annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2013. Any discussion? Hearing and I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, where's the chamber at? Come on up here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, evening.
Unfortunately, tonight we will... This month, we will not be presenting a business of the month. We were in a restructuring phase with the chamber, and we are actually very happy with our new pick. Her name is Judy Hughes. She's a fantastic business member who I believe will help our chamber excel into tomorrow with Florence as we keep on growing together, and I'd like her to present her to you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. I feel honored to be selected to serve this community and to move the Chamber of Commerce along and to make it shine as it always should be, and I want it to grow. And I look forward to meeting and spending time with each and every one of you. I want to get to know you, and I want to get to know what your feelings, what you would like to see with the chamber, and suggestions are always welcome. So I look forward to you. We're going to be coming every month. I'll be coming on the second session of each month, bringing the business of the month and updates, and any new members and any other new things that come up with the chamber. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Judy.
Item D is a presentation of service award to Ray Wright for 20 years of dedicated service. At this time, Ray could not be present, and his award will be issued to him at the staff level. We do want to recognize Ray for his 20 years of service, and we will be sending him a nice thank you note on behalf of the council. Item E, presentation of plaque to Scott Barber, Human Resources Director, for receiving the 2013 Human Resource Leadership Award.
Scott, how are you this evening? Scott, Lisa wrote up something for me to say about you. Since I've only known you a short time, she's known you a lot longer. But anyway, we'd like to recognize Scott Barber, our Human Resources Director, standing around letting the public see you, take some of the... See if they look at you, they don't have to look at me. He was recently honored with the 2013 Human Services Leadership Award. The Human Resources Professional of the Year recognition was presented by the Central Arizona Human Resources Management Association in partnership with the Best Companies Arizona Organization in October 25th this year. Scott received the first-ever award, along with the HR directors of the Central Arizona College and the Casa Grande Regional Medical Center. Beat out some pretty tough opponents. The Central Arizona Human Resources Management Association is one of eight chapters in the state affiliated with the National Society of Human Resource Management. Scott, tonight, the plaque presented to you, really pretty and nice-looking there. Anyway, here's the plaque, congratulates Scott on the well-deserved recognition, plus, for some of you may not know, he's the president of the Arizona Minnesota Risk Pool Board. Quite an accomplishment there also, Scott. And again, on behalf of our council, myself, thank you very much for the work you're doing here. Our gain is Casa Grande's loss. Hee-hee.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. You have anything you want to say?
Nothing.
No? Okay, good man. Okay.
The next item is a presentation of a plaque to Terry Tryon, Lieutenant, for completing the School of Staff in Command, sponsored by the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety.
Terry, come on up. See the bosses here?
Yep.
All right. Boss number one, boss number three, right? You got two boys, there's two bosses. Terry, receiving this plaque from the Northwestern University in law enforcement. Northwestern University is a well-respected and well-known organization that trains professional law enforcement officers. Terry has been in law enforcement since I... When did I hire you?
Eighty-nine.
Since eighty-nine, so we've got, what, eleven, twenty-five years now? And Dan sent him off to school as a lieutenant, which is very much needed in today's different changing views of law enforcement in the United States. So we have to keep up on top of it, and that's what we're doing. And Terry was able to complete a school. Terry, there were... How many? Eight agencies or something like that? I don't have my sheet with me.
There were nineteen agencies in the class, thirty-three total students.
And you've got a list of it, really a nice presentation. I understand people went up and saw it, but I didn't get the opportunity to. This is the plaque from Northwestern University Center, hang on to it, out of Illinois. And as far as I know, this is the first time anybody from the Florence Police Department has received this. So Terry, on behalf of the council, myself, again, congratulations. Take the knowledge that you gained, put it to use for us, make our department that much better. Okay, thank you, Terry. Thank you.
Item seven, consent. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by one single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of a special event liquor license for Caliente-Cassadell-Soul for their annual New Year's Eve dance on December 31, 2013, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Item B, approval of a special event liquor license for Florence Gardens Mobile Home Association for social hours from 3:30 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on January 16, February 20, March 20, November 20, and December 20. A New Year's Eve dance on December 31, from December 21st, 31, 2013, from 8:00 p.m. to midnight, and January 28, 2014, Three Parks fundraiser from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. Item C, ratification of Florence Gardens Mobile Home Association's application for a special event liquor license for the December 2, 2013, holiday party from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and a December 7, 2013, dance from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Item D, acceptance of donations of professional services valued at $8,700, $2,505, and $8,200 from the London Companies, the WLB Group, Inc., and Swaback Partners, PLLC, respectively, towards planning landscaping, architecture, and survey work on the Padilla Park at Silver King Plaza. Item E, resolution number 1416-13, adoption of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the final plaque for Anthem at Merle Ranch, Unit 16, requiring the provisions of the infrastructure improvement assurance or withholding of recordation to secure the satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of required improvements, establishing a deadline for required improvements to be completed, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Item F, approval of accepting the registers of demand ending October 31, 2013, in an amount not to exceed $2,441,468.90. Mayor, Member of Council, that is your consent agenda for the December 2, 2013 meeting.
Does any member of the council like to have anything pulled from the consent agenda? See any member of the audience have anything they'd like to see pulled from the consent agenda? See no movement, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda as is. Any other discussion? Hearing and I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eight, unfinished business. Item eight A, ordinance number 603-13, discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving a zone change on the Old West Bale Bonds Amazing RC Hobbies property located at 375 East Butte Avenue, Florence, Arizona, AKA APN 202-03-001. It's Planning and Zoning Commission number 15-13ZC. The first reading was held on November 18, 2013. Mr. Eckoff, will you be giving a presentation tonight?
Mayor, Council, I don't have anything more to add from the last presentation that we did, but I'd be happy to address questions if there are any.
Any public comment, one way or the other, to you? Additional... I mean, you hadn't had any before.
Mayor, Council, we've received no additional comments.
Any member of the council have a question for Mark or the applicant? See no movement? Need a motion?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 603-13 for the Old West Bale Bonds Zone Change.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to adopt ordinance 603-13 for the Old West Bale Bonds and Amazing RC Hobbies Zone Change. Any other discussion? Hearing and I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eight B, ordinance number 604-13, discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending Titles 5, Chapter 52, Solid Waste. First reading was held November 18, 2013. Mr. Knutson will be making a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a proposed code change for sanitation chapter. The chapter that's before you tonight is the same that was presented at the November 18 council meeting. And real quickly, just to highlight some of the major changes within that chapter is the requirement for all occupied homes participate in the town's sanitation system. So if you're in an occupied home, and you're paying for the sanitation service, so it's emphasizing that. Something that was in our code previously, but not to the degree that is in this version. Bulk trash is no longer able to be placed in the alleyways. We've identified the types of materials that are and are not collected through the bulk trash system. We're requiring that bulk trash items must be placed out within 48 hours of pickup. And then we're looking at other provisions with regards to illegal dumping and the proper placement of containers. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns the council may have.
Any member of the council have any questions? Jess?
Yes, Jess, on the alleys, what is the town going to do currently to make sure that all our alleys are clean?
Right now, there are responsibilities are placed on both the town as well as the property owner. So the property owner, it's in... It's the requirement of the property owner... So, the property owner, it's, it's in, it's the requirement of the property owner to maintain an alleyway that's adjacent to the property, to the rear of their property, and to make sure that the alleyway is free of any types of materials that would impede the access through the alleyways. So, what we have a lot is issues with illegal dumping. So, some folks from out of town or other places in town will enter into an alleyway, dispose of those items in the alley, and then it's left up to the, the town and that property owner that's adjacent to that alleyway to, to clean up those, those areas. So, so, does that answer your question?
Not quite.
Okay.
What are we going to do to ensure that it stays clean on a monthly basis, biweekly basis? Because there's going to be trash that'll still come into those areas.
How to maintain it clean is, you know, that's the responsibility of, of the town and the property owner. So, if there is an issue with illegal dumping or there's trash placed out in the alleyway, the town, through our code enforcement activities, is going to contact that property owner and take a look at that a little closely to see if there's issues that with regards to the responsibility of the property owner, or if it is truly in the, in the, in a right-of-way, then it's the responsibility of the town to, to clean that up. But the analogy I used at the last meeting with regards to graffiti or vandalism holds place in, in this instance as well. So, if somebody spray paints your house or dumps a big pile of trash on your property, it's the property owner that, that, it's their responsibility to, to clean, and it's the town's responsibility to find out who the, the person is that, that did that.
And that's the only responsibility the town has, is to look for somebody to blame?
Just like any, any other criminal activity, if, if a criminal activity takes place, you know, a lot of times, there's, you know, victims within that crime, and then it's the, the town's responsibility to find out the perpetrator in those instances.
That still doesn't answer my question, because you say we have a responsibility. It's not just to find who dropped the trash off, it's the idea of making sure it gets picked up. And if we're going to blame the, the property owner, we don't even know if the property owner put it there. What are we doing as a town to assist the property owner to get the trash picked up?
Councilmember Montoya, if I may. In those instances, we do try and work with property owner to identify where it came from. If they do not know, you know, the town needs to kind of step in if we can and assist them in trying to remove that trash.
That's what I'm looking for.
We still do have employees that can help us in those instances. However, we will go beyond to make sure we try and identify whoever done it.
Thank you.
Where that occurs.
Just a note that because of the change in language and including the institutional and, and more, more definition beyond our residential and commercial definitions that we had before, there might be a possible future conflict with my employer, so I'll recuse myself from both.
Any other question? Hearing none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept ordinance number 604-13, update to Chapter 52 of the Florence Town Code pertaining to sanitation services.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt ordinance 604-13, update to Chapter 52 of the Florence Town Code and pertaining to sanitation service. Any other discussion? I have one, and again, I'm not going to belabor on it. I think that the placement of trash in the alleyways instead of in front of the homes is the way to go. I don't see us putting trash out, making somebody put trash out in front of their house for up to 48 hours prior to pickup. Alleyways were designed for that, so that wouldn't go in front of their homes. I, I take the opinion that more people look at the front of the property than they do down the alleyways as they come into a community to look at it to see if there's someplace they want to live. And if they're, they're not aware of our pickup on that, I think that they're going to see trash piled in front of people's houses and wonder what the heck's going on here. So, I'm not happy with the trash. Since the last article came out in the paper, I have had numerous citizens contacting me, not only from here in town, but out in the Florence Gardens area, that neither are happy with the services either. So, I talked to the town manager about this today, and we will be reviewing the contract at the end of the fiscal year before we go into the next year of the contract to see what adoptions or changes need to be made. Hopefully, we can address some of those issues at that time. But I think that, one, pick up a month is not enough. I think it needs to be two, and that's all I have to say on it. Any other discussion? Call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Nay. Departmental reports. You all have copies of department reports in there. Any questions for any of the department heads? I see Tommy pulling his mic down.
Just one on, on Marks, I believe. In looking at the arts that I had discussed a few months back, it, it doesn't look like there's been any change to the, what you have listed on there. Maybe sometime I can meet with you and you can let me know where you're at on that.
What was that one on, Tommy?
The arts.
Oh, okay.
Proposal for making that part of a Florence 1% for the arts.
Fine.
If I may, Mayor, Council, council member. We are looking into that. We have been talking with the town attorney for him to give us legal opinion as to whether or not we can impose those in development agreements. So, we are waiting for that opinion. We are, in the meantime, trying to set up a tour in January to go to Oral Valley to kind of look at what they've got. So, we are going down that road. We're just kind of waiting for an opinion on that.
Thank you.
Any other member? Tara?
I have one. Wayne, on Hunt Highway, where they just completed the road stabilization and chip seal project? Is that correct? Where they just repaved on Hunt Highway in front of Anthem? How come they didn't do where the stripes are in the roads? They left that blank?
The, the purpose of that was pavement preservation, and we determined that the, the area between where the striping is, where the transitional striping, and where the crosswalk were protected from the, the reflective cracking that occurs. Henceforth, there's no travel zone where the striping is in those areas. Henceforth, it wasn't needed to be done.
Okay. It just, it looked, presentation-wise, it didn't look as cohesive?
Understand, and I think that will fade out in overtime, couple weeks, three weeks, et cetera. The purpose of that is to provide a coat over the course aggregate, and that's what we done with that pavement preservation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have anything from managers' report?
No, sir, Mayor. Council members, I did meet with you all individually here the last week or so, so I did not include a report into tonight's packet.
Okay. Any other questions, managers?
I'd like to, on the ambulance thing, where are we at on that? Or what do we hear from Southwest? Are they still going out of business, or?
Councilmember, we, we are still looking into what's going on. We do know that Southwest Metro or-
Southwest?
Is still in bankruptcy. However, we aren't, aren't really concentrating our services right there. We're just trying to make sure that the citizens are receiving adequate service. So, at this point in time, we're kind of at a status quo.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious what, yeah, if we have to go that direction, it's going to be a big deal.
Correct.
Any other? Hearing none, we'll go to the second call of the public. Same rules I put in place the first call of the public. Yeah, you can come up. You're public. Public.
Mayor and Council, I just want to say, you kind of rushed me off before, so I didn't get a chance to say anything. I want to say thank you to the council and everybody that, that supported my leave of absence for 10 weeks. Mr. Montoya, especially my chief, Chief Hughes, he had to put up with doing my job as well as his for the 10 weeks that I was gone, so I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome, Terry. Any other call of the public? Hearing none, I oppose call of the public, call of the council. You want to say something? Doesn't look like anybody wants to.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank everybody that had anything to do with the parade, Ray, all you guys did a great job. Thank you very much. And remembering, there is a Christmas parade coming up, and that's on what day? This next week? Friday? Christmas parade, lots of lights, and let's have a good time.
When is it? Ruben?
December 6th.
This Friday?
In, in looking what Lieutenant Tryon brought up about the Northwest Academy, currently there are only two academies that are provided to an officer of an administrative position since their academy that they were first hired, and that is the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia, and the other one is the Northwest Academy that's provided out of Chicago. Occasionally, they do a regional academy, and they travel throughout the nation and find locations, and we are very lucky to have one that was in the Phoenix area that Lieutenant Tryon was able to attend. So, these are one of the two highest academies, and he was able to attend one of those two. So, he did a fantastic job. They're not easy. Well, that's all I have.
Great, well, you're right. Tom? Tara?
Nothing.
Go.
No, just like Tom said about the parade, we appreciate everything, everybody that volunteered and helped, and, and our staff that helped. It turned out really nice. It was a great day. Quite get the crowd that I expected, because I thought the weather was better than it usually is, but anyway, that's.
Valerie. Lots of things going on in Florence, some we can talk about, some we can't talk about. Florence is coming up. This will be our last meeting this year, regular scheduled meeting. I would like to thank all of our staff for the work that you've done and put in this year. We won't have another get-together until I believe it's the second of January, a regular schedule? What?
If I may, Mayor, I do, you know, this is coming to the end of my first year here with the town, and I've had a wonderful time. You know, we've got a lot going on, and I appreciate yours and council's guidance, and we are doing a lot. And I do appreciate you guys' guidance. I am having a good time doing this.
I'm glad you like giving us the headaches that you do. But we do have a new manager's been on board, like you said, a year. You've seen some changes. You're going to see some more changes. We're not done yet. We have a lot more to do that we want to do, and everything that we do, we try to do for the betterment of Florence. We're concerned about our neighboring cities, but we were elected by the citizens of Florence to represent you all, and that's what we're going to do. Again, staff, thank you for the job well done. We on the council as a whole appreciate the job that you guys do. Even you, Jim. That's an attorney joke between Jim and I. And, but anyway, we do appreciate it, and we look forward to an upcoming year that's even going to be bigger and better than this year with more good releases coming out a little bit later time. Okay, need a motion?
Make a motion. We adjourn to executive session.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion? We don't have to read everything we're going to say, do we? Jim?
No.
Okay. Motion, a second, to adjourn to executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.